Now, we will open our business meeting. So again, welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the 13th, 2022. It is 10:33 a.m. We are in the community wing of City Hall. So formally, I guess I will ask us to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would the clerk give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Present.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Plufus is absent.
Thank you. I will... Oh, we have some new members, okay, in the audience today. So, public participation. In order for the city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, thank you, councilmember, please fill out comment cards with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table, near the agendas, or available from the Communications and Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Public participation shall be held in accordance with Section 286.0114 of the Florida statutes, and pursuant to the City Council's meeting policies and procedures, each speaker shall at the podium provide their name and may speak for up to three minutes. The public may provide comments to the City Council relative to matters not on the agenda at the times indicated in this agenda. Following any comments from the public, there may be discussion by the City Council. When addressing the City Council on specific enumerated agenda items, speakers shall direct all comments to the mayor, make their comments concise and to the point, not speak more than once on the same subject, not by speech or otherwise, delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the City Council, obey the orders of the mayor or the City Council, and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the City Council, which pursuant to Council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting, portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. Members of the public may make comments during the public comment portion of the meeting during the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. With that, I would invite the public to come forward, and is there anyone in the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Denise Calderwood. Thank you very much for explaining the rules. And I, you know, it's very intimidating when you come to a meeting where there's an agenda, but yet the rules for the city or for the public are actually more broken down and visible, saying, you know, talking about, you know, the disclaimer. And that's concerning because, you know, the city staff doesn't seem to have some kind of rules like that to follow for decorum as far as their behavior and the way they treat people. And this Saturday was a prime example during the beautiful event at Town Center. You know, I personally tried to pull our vehicle up there to participate. I had made phone calls to the city staff. I went to the Palm Coast Parks and Recreation Community Center, the main building, and asked about participating in Saturday's event. Never received a phone call, never received an email, never notified people. Then I was referred, oh, it might be on our website, and use Palm Coast Connect, okay? I don't use the computer as much as I should, you know, because I'm out in the community dealing with the problems that everyday people have. I don't sit behind a desk, and that is exactly what we did. You know, I felt like Rudolph the reindeer at the event because I was told by city staff that I could not pull our vehicle, which was an information sharing vehicle about suicide and mental health awareness because the need in Flagler County is so great, and those agencies like Flagler Cares, you know, and Flagler County Human Services say we don't have the ability or the resources or the money to help people. And I would question the Community Development Block grant saying that they just recently gave money to Flagler Cares in September because we've had several people call Flagler Cares and ask for direct help, and they said they have no money and they have no resources to give out, and that they're only an advocacy group, okay? So this is why I'm taking the time to advocate, to tell you that the advocacy and the groups that what is on paper is not necessarily what is actually existing in our community, okay? And for people to become aware, to actually know your community, okay? Those people who went door-to-door, who those people who listen to the citizens actually hear what they say, not what the paperwork says, okay? And if I need to keep coming and keep getting up here and talking under public comment, I will be the new Alan Lowe and show up at these meetings, okay? I don't feel it's necessary. I think staff, you know, do a good job. However, they get swayed by whoever is leading Flagler County, and I don't know, and I don't think it's the citizens, because these meetings tend to put people down, tend to make people feel like they're not important, and that statement about making the comments to people, you know, is eye-opening, okay? So wake up, smell the roses, people. This is your city, and we have major problems here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
And the solution lies with... We still have 11 seconds left, right? The solution lies with the leadership that has now been elected to hold the city staff accountable and to hold the budget too.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this section of the Agenda for Public Participation, and I will move forward. We have minutes of the City Council from the December 6th, 2022 Business Meeting, and I asked the clerk, I assume they require an approval?
Yes.
So I will ask, because we have two City Council members, have you all had a chance to review those minutes?
There was a motion that I made during the last meeting that's not reflected on the minutes. It was a motion regarding appointment of Vice Mayor. It does need to be added.
You can request an amendment to the minutes to be amended as you request, and then you can do the motions thereafter to approve the minutes as amended.
So would you rephrase your motion to approve the minutes to be amended as mentioned by the councilmember?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion to approve with the amendment. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second as well from Councilperson Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Four to zero.
Very good. So I'll continue on with my explanation of the meeting. Before we begin the Council Business portion of the meeting, I want to take a moment to discuss City Council processes relating to approval or denial of items presented to Council at all business meetings. For each workshop, City Council receives a comprehensive overview of each item, and at that time, it is Council's opportunity to provide opinions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require Council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the scheduled business meetings. The purpose of a business meeting is for Council to review and weigh all the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented, both at the prior workshop and today. With that, I would ask the City Council to... Let's see, do we have public comment?
We did public comment already.
We did already, we're finished, right?
Right. We're on item number...
So, item F, so I would ask Council to go ahead and read Resolution F-2 into the record, please.
This is a resolution concerning the Master Services Agreement for Parks and Recreation Master Plan, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving a master services agreement with Berry Dunn for the development of a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, providing authorization to execute, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. So we've just heard and had a question-answer period in the prior workshop regarding this item. Any additional questions come to mind at this time? Very good. Any last comments from staff at this time?
No, we are good, thank you.
Very good. So I would open up this item for the public. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the item at this time?
Hi, Denise Calderwood. The plan is fantastic. Palm Coast over the years have had beautiful plans, but when it comes to actually implementing those plans once they're written, they have not been accomplished. I can't say enough how much I've sat on the sidelines, have been quiet, have watched the plans being written, the consultants hired, the beautiful reports being written, and then what gets done is the group of citizens comes here, comes forward, expresses that we want a pickleball court, and overnight we put $8 million towards pickleball. Yes, it's the fastest-growing sport there is in the United States right at this moment, and that is because we have an aging population. You have an aging population in Palm Coast, and then several years ago, Palm Coast was so proud to say that they were a community for a lifetime, which was a funded federal grant that came, you know, community for a lifetime for citizens. At that time, for three months, the Advisory Board that met actually did plans. The Palm Coast made signs, street signs, that were very big so that you can actually read them when you can't see, when you age. We added streetlights. Those things got done, and then at a six or seven meeting, the city manager comes in and cancels the meeting and says, we're no longer having the program, and yet we say we're so proud to serve people. The annual report that you have from the Parks and Recreation Department just stated that 2,600 activities, individual activities, were held at the community center, and at the same time, 1,309 rentals occurred, okay? So that means people paid additional monies to use the Palm Coast Community Center. Where did that money go? It went into the budget. Those are the things that should be looked at in the master plan and actually dig down deep and hold accountability to what has been done, what we need for the future, and like I said, my neighborhood still doesn't have a neighborhood park. I've asked about it. Our citizens want it. If we need to pack this room, we should have it because across the street now, 4,000 people are going to be moving into that neighborhood, and the developer paid them pack fees, okay? I brought up an issue with the now-city fire chief to say that, you know, we can have a combined park, and maybe the firemen can start using it and do something because the fire department is right next to it, and then there's a church that's right next to it. So everybody could benefit from that park and then the new community. These are the things that should be discussed and done with the community, pull the community in to the planning. And when you have community budgeted meetings, let the citizens know that those meetings exist somehow, because the citizens never get that message, and city staff say, oh, go to Palm Coast Connect, we'll connect you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment, come back to the dais. Are there any additional... Is there any additional discussion or questions regarding this item?
I do have one comment and maybe a question maybe for Brittany. I see here that there's going to be public involvement, so to address the concern that was just at the podium, in what manner have you all spoken with this vendor with regards to how they're going to get the public involved?
Yeah, that's a great point. So part of it is going to be the needs assessment questionnaires. We'll work with focus groups, stakeholders, and community partners to put those questions together. The surveys will be direct mailed to select households, but also put out onto a website where it is open for the general community to provide their input.
And where can residents go to kind of keep an eye on when that survey is available?
We will provide that on the city website.
And then my other question was, in this assessment that they're going to do, will there be or can there be added, if it hasn't been contemplated yet, a section where we can look at other facilities that can generate revenue like the community center does so that, again, we can look at what the ROI is long-term?
Yeah, that'll go back to the scope of work with that cost-benefit analysis and the level of service, so they will be analyzing current facilities at the same time that they are identifying opportunities for future facilities as well. And we'll ensure that there's a robust campaign that goes out as we're going through this process to make sure we're communicating to the public every step of the way.
Thank you.
Answer your question?
Yes.
Very good. Any additional discussion?
No.
So with that, I have no questions. I would ask for a motion regarding the Resolution Number F, Letter F, Number Two.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilperson Pontieri has given us a second. Is there any additional discussion? So I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. We move next to item F-3, and I will ask Council to read that into the record for us, please.
This is a resolution concerning the concession agreement, concession lease agreement for the Palm Harbor Golf Course, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the concession agreement with Loopers at Palm Harbor Golf Club, LLC for food and beverage services at the Palm Harbor Golf Course, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. DiLorenzo, you want to add something to your prior presentation at this time?
Yes, sir. I'm here with some of the financial matters that you asked about. The column on the left is the, under our current agreement, the base rent was $600 a month currently, which generated $7,200 annually. The water and sewer bill is, this is on an annual average, about $24,000, and you heard me describe the changes that we're making to further refine the costs at the clubhouse itself. The electric for the entire facility, clubhouse facility, not the golf course, but for the clubhouse facility, is approximately $6,000 annually. Existing councilmembers, you'll remember that we engaged our local company Watt Core that installed a metering system on the kitchen, and so the kitchen will now be, the leased premises will now be charged their actual cost for electric through that new metering system. So we will have no cost related to the restaurant or concession services. And then the city was also paying the entire amount of the propane, which was running approximately $600 a month or $7,200 a year. So our costs previously were about $37,200. That is an estimate. It also doesn't include maintenance you would expect from a shared facility, but it's some rough numbers to help you see that, you know, our expenses were about $30,000 annually towards the concession. And now with the new agreement, the rent has increased to $17,982 in the first year. We have that split of utilities 50/50, but I anticipate this number, our expense will go down now that the new metering is complete, and we have no other costs. The other costs of electric, propane, telecom, and internet are all provided by the new tenant. And over the first five years, if you add the 3% annual increase, you see that that number grows, the revenue grows a little bit each year, about $600 or so each year over the first five years, and will continue into the future. So I hope that answered your previous questions about the cost to operate the facility.
And your comment, I just want to offer a compliment. So this would come under the area of economic development. So I know that you were able to kind of bring in a small company by the name of Watt Core, and now you have creatively used that company to help us with this agreement and this new business going forward. That company, if I remember, employed a dozen or perhaps a couple of dozen local Palm Coast residents, and I look forward to the Loopers Enterprise employing local city or certainly county residents as well. So this is a small example of how, if we do work together, we can help ourselves move forward. So again, my compliments to your creative team, so thank you for that. And I would ask City Council, any final questions regarding the agreement?
I'm just happy to see we turned a corner on this. It was a difficult process, no doubt, and I'm glad that we're no longer subsidizing a business. Businesses are meant to stand on their own. Good businesses do stand on their own, and I'm sure the, I'm sure our citizens are going to be very, very happy with this new restaurant. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
So I know we discussed a lot of the items in the presentation during the workshop. Some of the things that I wanted to say for this specific meeting was regarding the lease, some of the terms of the lease. I read through the lease and noticed that, and perhaps I missed it, but I don't think I did, there doesn't appear to be a provision for late fees if the rent's not paid timely, and also a provision for repair to HVAC. I understand that this is a shared facility between what will be Loopers and the city. HVAC repairs can be costly, so it appears to me the lease is silent on that, and it is something that needs to be inserted as well as a late fee provision so that there, we can avoid any ambiguities or vagueness issues down the road.
So, Section 1B, and I believe you have that in front of you, has a generalization about the maintenance and repair and replacement of equipment of the leased premises. And I believe you are correct that HVAC is not directly pointed out there, or mechanical equipment, but it's just generalized as equipment. And I'll describe equipment in this way. The leased premises has its own mechanical equipment that's owned by the current lessee. I know that Loopers and the current lessee have been negotiating on some of the equipment remaining. I'm not sure about that piece, but either way, they will be replacing it with their own equipment, and they'll be responsible for maintaining and replacing any equipment that fails. As far as... Yes, ma'am?
No, I just suggest maybe an addendum that states exactly what fixtures the new tenant will be bringing in and installing. That way, it's very clear what the city owns versus what Loopers will own and therefore be responsible to maintain.
We do have a listing from our previous tenant that we've done. We do have a fixture list. We don't have that here because obviously they're not moved in yet, but the intent is that any mechanical equipment that serves the clubhouse as a whole, because the city operates out of it also, and not specific to the leased premises, will be the responsibility of the city as the landlord to maintain. So for example, the HVAC system, which covers the entirety of the clubhouse, would be, the city would do the repair to that if something were to happen. But all the mechanical equipment and other things inside, there's a couple items that may or may not remain that are city equipment that we have a listing for. Those would be maintained by the city, too. I mean, there is a computer. I don't even know if they're going to keep that or not. There's a couple other things.
So, and I hate to be the thorn, but that, the statements that were just made are contradictory. So if the HVAC services the entire facility and it's going to be the responsibility of the city, then it's the responsibility of the city. But if Loopers is bringing its own HVAC system, like was just represented by Mr. DiLorenzo, then it sounds like they would be responsible for that system. So that's what I'm talking about, just some clarity with regards to those responsibilities because those are expensive fixes, repairs, replacements, and this has the potential to be a 20-year lease because of the renewals. So in that 20 years, I would assume that the HVAC is going to need to be addressed.
Yeah, we'll be happy to work on that with Loopers. There is both. Council is correct. There is mechanical equipment that's a responsibility of ours because we have offices in the building as well, and then we have the entryway where you, you know, pay your fees and that kind of stuff. So we have a portion that's ours, but then they have their own equipment as well. We will refine that. And then to your second point about late fees, that seems an appropriate addition to the agreement, and I think we'll just look for consent from Loopers, that they'll be okay with that and to make that change in the contract as well.
Yeah, and I don't want to negotiate a lease from the dais, but some type of percentage, if not paid by a certain date, certainly needs to be added into the lease prior to it being finalized.
Yes, ma'am.
So would you accept for City Council to finalize those elements in the lease so that we avoid negotiation of the lease from the dais and work with staff and also with the applicant?
Certainly.
Be suffice, and review...
Give the city staff.
City staff.
Give the city staff, yeah.
Correct, just so we kind of keep that flow going, and obviously make you aware of the details that they come up with. Would that work?
Yes, please.
Good, very good, okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pontieri. I'd like to say that I did take the time to read through the lease agreement with Loopers and also took a look at all of the other submissions that were submitted. My feelings are that we have come up with a fairly good solution that will work for both the City of Palm Coast at this time and our new tenant that will be taking over at the Palm Coast Golf Course, and I'm looking forward to making this work and be of benefit to the community, City of Palm Coast, and also to our new tenant.
Very good. Any additional comment? So I would open this item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Any final comments from City Council members?
Will happily make the motion to approve.
So I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Just a minute. Councilmember Danko, does that motion include a potential negotiation with city staff and the applicant on a...
Yes, yes.
On an increase for late rent payments?
As we just discussed.
So I have a motion to approve the resolution, provided there's an amendment regarding the late fee. Is there a second?
If I can just add to that, also the provision, the specificity with regards to some of the equipment, we can add that as well.
I'm not clear on that.
So the discussion that we had with regards to responsibility for maintenance, replacement, repair of equipment that's in the shared facility, that needs to be specified prior to...
So my understanding from Council before is there is a listing of equipment that is the city's, and there is a listing of equipment that is known to be the current tenant's, but we don't have a listing yet of what the new tenants would be. So you're suggesting a listing of what the new tenant would be bringing in?
Correct. When that determination is made, that being an addendum added to the lease agreement specifically stating what will be the responsibility of the city versus the responsibility of the tenant.
So there'd be two lists, so it'd be an inventory of each of the pieces of equipment?
Correct.
Okay.
Just...
Let's go back and...
Yeah, we need to...
I'm going to ask Councilmember, would you withdraw your motion in favor of restating your motion?
Yeah, we can include that. It's, I don't know, having dealt with rental properties, I've never gotten a list of the tenant's property that, you know, might need repair.
The point is well taken. In other words, so it's clear, so there's an inventory, and then there'd be an ongoing responsibility. So if you'd restate your motion...
Restate.
So the motion, as I understand it, is to approve the resolution with the addition of a negotiated late fee and also with...
List.
With detailed inventory lists of what the tenant's equipment and responsibility are and what the city's equipment and responsibilities are.
I'm good with that.
And the ability for the city staff or city manager to execute those changes in the agreement, okay?
Sure.
I just don't want to have to bring an addendum with the list back before you guys again, which is a ministerial action.
I think you, staff, city manager understands the direction, so yes, that's the motion.
All right. So I have a motion on the dais. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilperson Pontieri. Any further discussion? So let's go ahead with the roll call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. We move forward.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor. If you have an interest, James has a couple slides about the... If you have an interest, James has a couple slides about the transition now that you've approved the new contract.
Okay, so, hold on a second.
It's at your pleasure if you'd like to hear it now or...
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of slides, not too many, so just...
And just so you understand my hesitancy, besides staff, we only have a handful of members. So what I was actually thinking about was, is there a way that you could share this with the public at large, so that there is a marketing initiative, so that we are making all of Palm Coast and all of Flagler County aware of this? So please practice on us, but assure me that you're going to spread this word, you know, far and wide, so everybody is aware of this wonderful new asset to the community.
Yes, yes, sir. Once Council is familiar with this today, we have a meeting this afternoon with Communications to go over a full communications plan for transition to make sure that there's a comfort level with our customers at the golf course, and we continue to serve them the best we can while we're in transition. So go ahead, James.
Okay, so November, December, which is what we're into now, is that on November 30th, the city manager met with Loopers, and was it just an introductory kind of meeting? December 1st, Nathan mentioned it earlier in the previous workshop, that the existing tenant was sent a letter from the city. Then on December 6th, we had an internal staff meeting to kind of discuss the maintenance and cleanout. And then along, on Monday morning, just this past Monday, Loopers and our city staff met just to kind of have better communication within themselves on the process of what will happen. Today, we had the presentation, and then as Jason just mentioned, we'll have a meeting this afternoon, kind of talk about our communication strategy with the public. So then extending on to January through to March, so the 14th of January, the current tenant will end their business. January 15th, we will have a food truck on service. We're meeting with the food truck tomorrow afternoon to kind of discuss location. Ultimate goal is to make sure that golfers still have food available while they're playing their rounds. Then the 16th, the lease commencement, along with potential alcohol services. And then also on the 16th, we'll start looking at maintenance, repairs, and the cleanouts. That will all begin. Very workload dependent, as Jason mentioned earlier, you know, we have the issue with the roof, and then some stuff with the kitchen, we want to just double check and everything before we get started. And then potentially, the new tenant could start their limited services. And then hopefully, March 1st, we'll have full service to all our golf patrons and anyone in the county to come over.
And just be reminded, that'll be dependent on the CEO. And that's it.
Very good, I thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I will close the discussion and congratulations. All right, we now move to Agenda Letter G, Consent. Are there any items within the consent agenda that City Council would like to discuss at this time?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Virginia?
Nothing.
Oh.
Nothing.
Oh, I have none.
I just had a few questions. So I know on the consent agenda is the CBDG program approval that Mr. Papa presented during the previous meeting. And I just want to make sure that the approval of this is with the understanding that we will see a further breakdown of the $81,000 for the, what I consider, I guess, staff and managerial. So if we can be provided that as a part of this approval, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, that would be fine. I think Mr. Papa alluded to that, and based on my experience, so again, I'll reinforce it, that that information will be available in the public, so that you can see exactly how those monies were recommended, recommended to be spent by the Citizens Advisory Task Force. And then it will be up to this City Council to determine if they are, if we are in agreement with that.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
And then the other question that I had, and I think this is probably for Mr. Cody, with regards to the contract with McKim and Creed. There seems to not be any type of mechanism for oversight on making sure that whatever contractor is hired is monitored, as far as making sure the engineer's designs are followed through with. And I think that one of the issues that we've probably seen in contracts with the city is that designs maybe are not being followed and are not being monitored during the process, and then we are paying more on the backend to address those shortcomings. So if there can be some type of mechanism in the scope of work where the contractor is, or rather where the engineer is responsible to not monitor the contractors themselves, that's not their job, but to make sure that their designs are being followed by whomever is hired as the contractor.
So just so I understand, so at the conclusion of a project, the project is, which has been permitted, is, is, what's the word I'm looking for? Is looked at, is reviewed by city staff to see if it is compliant and consistent with the plan and the engineering and all of that? Are you suggesting we do something over and above that?
I am. And the reason for that is, the contract does provide, I think at the bottom of page four, for a periodic...
I'm sorry, inspection was the word I'm looking for. There is a final inspection, which details the plan, the engineering, and the final product.
Correct. And obviously, that's appropriate, but at that point, there's probably been a lot of work done, and so if we're waiting until then, there can be delays. It could be costly to have to maybe go back and unwind certain things that were not done correctly. So my suggestion is simply to add something very small in the scope of work that says that there either be a specific periodic monitoring to make sure that the designs are being followed, as provided. I mean, we're hiring the engineer for a reason, their design should be followed, and rather than waiting until the end for that process to take place.
So is the question, I guess the first question is, are there periodic inspections done throughout the life, the timeline of a project?
Alex Blake, City Palm Coast Utility Engineer. Yes, there are daily inspections performed. In the case of this contract, as in many of these similar type of projects with these utilities, there is inspection coverage over multiple layers, starting with myself. I'm present frequently on those project sites. I have a project manager that frequents those sites. There is a staff engineering inspector that is assigned to that project, will be there daily, performing daily reports. And we typically, our processes, we typically hold progress meetings once every two weeks. The consultant engineer is present at those meetings, does minutes, conducts the meetings, and then issues those minutes. So we have a whole record of what's been done, an entire journal, if you will, of inspections from the start of the project to the end. You also have the building department inspections included on this as well. So if you think about this particular project, which is a sludge dewatering, it's a structure of mechanical devices and electrical components. So you have a structural component, which will have a building inspection done on it, or multiple inspections done. You have electrical components that'll have building inspections done. So there's multiple layers through that. The consultant will frequently be observing progress of construction, because they're responsible, if you look at the scope, they're responsible for basically keeping a ledger of the progress of the project. So since the engineer record is the one doing this, they have to certify the as-built drawings at the end of the project. In order for them to do that, they need to be an active participant throughout the construction project. It doesn't, we're not stating that as exact as this is being suggested, as, you know, a defined task, but it's implicit, because the permitting for the project, once the design is complete, that has to go to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Okay, so the engineer record has to complete that, send those documents in for us to get that permit. In order for that implement, this structure to be activated and put into service, that also has to be cleared through the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which is, again, is another step of the engineer of record. So we have had no problems with this particular general language in these contracts, and we've had, this is, again, a continuing engineering consultant, that we've done multiple successful projects with over, probably well over 10 years.
Okay, so I appreciate the information. And to Councilperson Pontieri's point, which I think is valid and a good one, there is the opportunity with some of these projects, I think one was brought up earlier in a meeting, the Bel Air project as an example, where you could run into unknowns, and the project can actually change significantly, and I think Florida Park Drive was another example. So having an oversight, certainly in the case of a project, not changing direction, but anomalies appearing or things that perhaps could not be forecast or predicted, I think is an excellent, you know, should be a standard operating process. Now, I'll leave it to you to perhaps meet with city manager and discuss what kind of mechanisms might, how you might define those. I'm not sure that I know, but maybe you could have a further discussion and bring those back to City Council under Councilperson comments for us to consider in the future.
Certainly, and I think my concern, and thank you, Mayor, is if we are going to continue to kind of use these general contracts, which I think is a very smart thing to do when you have a good contract, don't recreate the wheel. But when we're paying somebody $262,000 for a scope of work, I think that it's a very valid request to say that they should be providing periodic, even if it's just milestone updates with regards to ensuring that the designs that we're paying for are being complied with by the contractor. That's just my suggestion.
Good. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent from City Council?
Just a quick question. You say you meet about every two weeks on these things?
Correct.
So you have no objections to anyone from Council attending one of those meetings?
None.
Thank you.
Just from the public, from the sunshine perspective, singularly?
Yeah.
And if you would coordinate with city manager to make sure that we're compliant with all of that, just to make sure that there's no misperception or conception of all of that?
Got it.
Very good. Well, with that, I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I made it.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilperson Danko to approve, and a second by Councilperson Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion by City Council at this time? And does the clerk have a comment?
No, do we do public comment on this yet?
On the consent, I don't believe so. I did...
We usually do public comment at the beginning to see if there's anything that should be pulled off.
I did at the beginning, I believe.
Okay, all right, just making sure we...
Do I need to confirm that with the clerk? Did I offer public comment on the consent agenda? I think I did.
I think that's why I was hesitant, in that you were doing councils first, but we hadn't opened it up to the public yet. I don't think...
Okay, so let me take this opportunity to invite the public to come and comment on our consent agenda today. So thank you for that.
Thank you to the city attorney, Jean Dowd, Palm Coast resident. Came here for this. I want to thank Jose Papa and his staff. I would ask, and I'll write it out, could they put up, this is 10 years that we're in this program, the CBG, how much in grant money? Because I know you love getting grant money. I heard it from the parks, get grant money. $500,000 is a lot of money. And I got up here a few months ago, I think, when Jose made the presentation. 20 families helped their homes, 62 scholarships for kids to go to camp. That wouldn't have been there if it wasn't for that grant money. So 10 years of getting that. Thank you, Jose, and everyone else. And I know, being a veteran, federal paperwork is a pain. I'd also want to repeat something I said a couple months ago. Thank you for worrying about the future of our water, that we have safe water treatment plants. The staff, thank you. And I'd like to thank the city for these things. First, I'll have a piece of paper, I'm not the best technology, about how much our budget is, $320 million. So we have $500,000, thanks to the hard work of that department, and you, the council, will approve and monitor $320 million. It's just amazing. And last, yeah, I got time. There was a hot debate on the budget in August, but in fact, the budget starts a lot earlier. I was at this meeting when our assessor was here in May, and it's great information he gave out. I hope he comes again this May, because I'd like to see the difference. And I'd also like to thank the city for looking at and making it simple for me and understand the budget, sorry. I get nervous up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will ask for a motion.
I think we already made it.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had both seconds. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes four to zero.
Very good. We move to the final section of our agenda, and... Does that qualify for public participation?
That was on the consent agenda.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment to City Council on any members, on any items not previously discussed on this agenda? Seeing no one from the public come forward, I will close this section of public participation. I will return to City Council. Are there any items of discussion by City Council members at this time?
I see that we're already beginning to schedule our next budget here. Unbelievable as it is. So I know we discussed after the last round that we were going to go a lot deeper this time, and we were going to literally sit down line by line with department heads and hold workshops, and I just want to make sure we stay on that path, that we don't deviate from that. Other than that, I just want to say, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Festus for the rest of us, and I hope everybody enjoys the holiday season.
Thank you, Councilperson.
I also second your suggestion and reminder about the budget. I'm looking forward to that. I want to do a shout out and a thank you to our Palm Coast Fire Department, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and also Public Works for their floats at the Starlight Parade. They were a lot of fun. There were a lot of kids that were interacting, so I thought that was really cool. So thank you for that. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I wish everybody a safe holiday season, and looking forward to the next year.
Thank you.
I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah. And I'd also like to say that I am very pleased with the comments made by the mayor at our last council meeting regarding going to visit with constituents in their home and listen to them, and what they would like to share with the mayor or with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson. I'm quite excited about that initiative. The only comment I would have, based on my recent experience, is, so we have a few members of the community here with us, and hopefully more listening electronically, but staff in particular, because you're here in the room, everybody, please watch out for yourself and your own health, and make sure that you and your family can enjoy the holiday period, healthy, happy, and move forward into a bright new year, full of opportunity, which I think has been projected and promoted from this City Council today. I could not be more excited about what the future holds for all of us. So thank each and every one of us that are here in the room together today. With that, I would ask the city attorney, are there any final comments for today?
Just happy holidays, everyone, and have a great New Year, and I don't have anything else.
Very good. City manager?
Yes, I do have a few items. As part of your packet, there's a sole source and emergency purchases table, and if you have any questions that you didn't already have answered, of communicating with me earlier, we're happy to go over those as well.
Very good.
I want to thank you, because we did discuss some of those items, and you answered my questions sufficiently, so thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Also, to the vice mayor's point, we are going to be kicking off 2024 pretty aggressively with the Strategic Action Plan process and budget preparation. Our January 3rd meeting was canceled, so this is your last official meeting for 2022. But going back to some of the comments made today, on January 10th, you are going to receive some very comprehensive presentations, including by the direction of City Council, through the Strategic Action Plan process of getting a stormwater update that comes to you twice a year. And it's not just stormwaters, also our engineering projects and... And so today I heard reference to the Belter project. That will be part of your presentation on January 10th to get into some of those challenges and opportunities we're gonna have. And, um, specifically to the budget calendar, that is published, it's on our website. We encourage members of the public to be engaged. Uh, all of our last year's budget documents are posted for public viewing and again, that entire budget calendar is available on the website and will come to you directly through your leadership guide and the strategic action plan process. So January's gonna be, uh, very busy and we're excited about that. The only other item I have is, I want to wish everyone Happy Holidays, our employees, which are the best employees in my opinion in, uh, in the world, and I appreciate everything they do and thank you, city council and NESA. Uh, wish everyone very much a Happy Holiday and see you next year.
So with that, I would ask for a motion to lower the gavel on the final, uh, city workshop and meeting of the year 2022. Looking forward, of course, to sounding the gavel at the first meeting, uh, in January. So may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.